And welcome to the June 6th meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Counselor Cruz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squalla.
Present.
Counselor Van Helsinga.
Here.
President Zerola.
Here.
Counselor Boescherman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cregan.
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. Public forum, we have one individual signed in remotely. Ms. Jacobson, you may unmute yourself and speak on any item on the agenda for not more than two minutes.
Hello, City Council, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I want to speak about the last agenda item that is on your agenda, it doesn't have a number, the flag painting of the sidewalk. I want to address how shameful you guys are for twisting your words. Mr. Zarella, you want to lie about the hate emails that you got about the LGBTQ community? If you didn't spread public hate, and Sam Squalla didn't spread public hate, you guys would have never received those emails. Hate brings hate. If the City Council wasn't so hateful, you guys wouldn't have received those hateful emails.
Ma'am, you were free to speak about the agenda item.
I am, I am. You're acting like you guys are victims, and you're not. You're using your government position.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you one more time, speak to the agenda item or not at all.
I am speaking on the agenda item. Mr. Van Hasinga, you're using your public speech.
All right, we're done, thank you. All right, anyone in the audience may approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and speak on any item on the agenda for not more than two minutes.
Jacqueline Wetschi, Fitchburg resident, I'm speaking against Agenda Item 137-23. Farming has an aura of motherhood and apple pie, but let's look at farming in Fitchburg. A lot of it is not an essential service to feed us, but things like raising guinea pigs for biomedical research, growing ornamental flowers, or breeding dogs. For a lot of people, it's a hobby. The question then becomes, should the taxpayers subsidize this? Should we permanently remove property from the tax rolls to benefit special interests? Who are the farmers? With their large acreage compared to other city residents, they are among the wealthiest individuals in Fitchburg. While the people who work on farms are of diverse backgrounds, the owners of the farms are almost, if not all, rich and white. They come asking you to preserve their generational wealth and privilege. We face a severe housing shortage, and rather than have land near them developed so people have a place to live, they want to look out their windows at a landscape devoid of other people, and especially devoid of brown people from El Salvador at the central of Angelistico Vida Real. It's not the government's job to prop up people in their privileged lifestyles. Recently, the mayor had a photo op at Enterprise Bank, and if he went a little further to the back of that strip mall, he would have found unhoused people living in their cars. If we're going to use our tax dollars to help others, it should be folks like that who are really struggling, not the elites who come saying, "Not in my backyard."
Any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will proceed to our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place Thursday, June 15th, from 4 until 5:30 PM, in Room 203 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. The Fitchburg Historical Society wishes to announce and celebrate that their volunteer, Dr. Joe Cronin, received a Star Award from the Massachusetts History Alliance at its annual conference, which was held at Devens yesterday, June 5th, for his longtime work researching the city's history. His research is both being added to the Historical Society records and being used to create new programs that are being presented by the Historical Society and the Stratton Players. The public is invited to attend the upcoming history program, Brothers in Blue, From the Battlefront to Main Street, a salute to Civil War veterans who served in the Fitchburg Police Department. The Lives and Battles of Some of Fitchburg's Civil War Veterans told at their gravesites, read by interpreters and actors. It will be presented for free at Forest Hill Cemetery on Tuesday, June 13th, at 6:30 PM. In case of inclement weather, the rain date is Wednesday, June 14th, at 6:30 PM. For more information, call the Historical Society at (978) 345-1157. The New Players Theater Guild will be performing Neil Simon's Chapter 2 this weekend. For more information, visit nptg.org. And the Stratton, oh, and this is the Brothers in Blue, which is also being supported by the Fitchburg Cemetery Department, Fitchburg Police Department, and Fitchburg and Leinster Cultural Councils. Next, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, the Appointments Committee met, and we took up a new appointment for the City Auditor and Finance Director for the City of Fitchburg, term to expire June 17th, 2026, Jacqueline Cronin, which was approved unanimously.
Move to approve the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have some promotions this evening. Chief Martino, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. President, City Councilors, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing us once again to use your forum to highlight the efforts of our officers when they are promoted within the department. It really means a lot to the department and the families that we have this opportunity to gather in front of the City Council, just really showcase what they've accomplished thus far. Our police officers spend months upon months in preparation for promotional exams, and they cannot think of a better way to celebrate their accomplishments than with you tonight, with their families, and their coworkers from the Police Department. These two promotions come on the heels of a retirement. Captain Harry Hess retired from the Fitchburg Police Department on May 24th after 30 years of service. I would like to commend Captain Hess for his dedication of service to the City of Fitchburg. Obviously, we have some big shoes to fill with the vacancy of Captain Hess, but I have no doubt that these promotions are going to do just that. Captain Chris Garcia, Captain Garcia joined the Fitchburg Police Department in 1997. Much of his early years were spent in the Patrol Division. The captain rose through the ranks, becoming a police sergeant in 2015, a police lieutenant in 2017, and most recently, police captain in 2023. It's been my distinct honor to have promoted him to all three different ranks during my tenure as chief, which is exciting for me that I've seen him grow in his role as a leader within the Police Department, from sergeant all the way up to captain, so it brings on a special meaning to me. The captain took part in a comprehensive assessment exam for the rank of captain, and he recorded the top score during this assessment. Captain Garcia, in his new role, will lead the Operations Division. It's a position within the Police Department that oversees all the uniformed officers, the detectives. Captain Garcia's overall duties will expand a large part of the Police Department. Sergeant Leona Teague, Sergeant Teague joined the Fitchburg Police Department in 2017. Prior to that, she worked as one of our dispatches. Since that time, she has worked primarily in the Patrol Division. She had filled in in some aspects in our Records Department. Sergeant Teague sat for the extremely competitive civil service exam for police sergeant. Leona scored high enough to be placed on the sergeant's list in which she was chosen from. The role of police sergeant is one of the most demanding and important roles in my, in police services. Sergeant Teague has shown her ability to mentor our young officers while providing leadership for the next generation of Fitchburg police officers, which makes me extremely proud to make this promotion, Leona, because I know the future of our young officers is in good hands with the sergeant. I'm extremely proud of the accomplishments of both these officers and what they bring to the Fitchburg Police Department and the City of Fitchburg. I'm extremely grateful to have their families here with us this evening. No one knows better than the families how much effort goes into taking and preparing for one of these promotional exams. Tonight, this milestone is as much about the families as it is about the officers being promoted, and I'm so glad that they can share in this evening's event. And lastly, I would be remiss in not recognizing the members of my department who are here in full strength tonight. That says a lot about these two promotions, that they're well-respected, that they've been accepted by the rank and file, and I'm sure they look forward to working under their leadership. In closing, I would once again like to say thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to do this in front of this audience, in front of their family and friends, and I look forward to Madam Clerk swearing them in. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's our privilege, Chief.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I would ask that we clear the bench.
That I will faithfully and impartially. And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Accommodate upon me as.
Accommodate upon me as.
A captain for the Fitchburg, for the City of Fitchburg.
A captain for the City of Fitchburg.
Sacrifice.
So hold your pardon.
Congratulations.
Oh, I thought you wanted to picture.
Oh, no, no, I figured I'd have both of them. We could swear both of them, we're doing pictures. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I was gonna, uh, do the swearing for the sergeant, and then we'll both do the pictures.
I solemnly promise and swear.
I solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Accommodate upon me.
Accommodate upon me.
As a.
Police sergeant.
Sergeant, as a police sergeant.
As a police sergeant.
For the City of Fitchburg.
For the City of Fitchburg.
So hold your pardon.
So hold your pardon.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Yeah.
Now, I'll picture.
I think it's all over, sir. Mr. Mayor, you want to join us?
Purchaser of 260 Rollstone Street who will be developing this into 20 units of housing is Steve Senay, who does have a long history in Fitchburg of development of residences and other properties. The 491 Main Street, we were really, again, Main Street being the, you know, the main artery for our city. 491 Main Street is the building adjoining right opposite the east side of Christ Church on Fox Street, and it was for a long time the Army-Navy store, but it was really a conglomeration of other properties. So, we were, after many, I'm going to say decades of neglect, because both Executive Director Murphy and I were taken through the property by our Realtor, Nick Pelletier. It really is a daunting building. But God bless Leslie Cologne and her partner Roberto Cologne of the wonderful El Toro Restaurant. They presented a very compelling plan. They presented enormous experience in construction and development, and it was very clear that their vision was a revitalization. What was to continue was to do their part for the revitalization of Main Street as well as the arts economy, as they are preparing to have a performance venue within it for light jazz and blues, which is not, which is actually, was very popular here from the '50s through the '80s. But the Cologes really have a vision that, and I agree with it, that folks will come. Folks will come to see small jazz groups or blues singers and traveling artists. So, this is just so exciting. We were very happy on City Property to vote for this. The third item, 128-23, which was the street acceptance plan for Ethier Street, we postponed it. We were holding that until the Public Works meeting that was going to occur the following week. So, we will be reviewing that when we have our next meeting, and I'll be in touch with Executive Director Murphy on that. Side yard sales, nothing to share. I will be in touch with both Assessor Chris and Treasurer Ann Cervantes to schedule those meetings, because we do have some side yard sales coming up. And if anyone else from City Property would like to share those present at the meeting, Councilor Van Helsing was also present. We always appreciate having Councilor Van Helsing at City Property. It was a very productive meeting.
Move to approve the report of the City Property Committee.
I have a motion and second to approve the report. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Report of the Finance Committee, Councilor Gina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on May 24th and took up several orders. There's, has been custom, there's three and a half pages worth of items. So, I just would ask that I waive the reading and...
Second.
Yeah, if there's no objection, all right, we'll waive the reading. Before we vote on this, I believe Councilor Van Helsing had some items he needed to bring up.
I just moved to approve items 130 through 138-23 in the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second for items 130 through 138-23. That is from the first page to the, from the bottom of the beginning page to the top of the third page of finance items for anyone following along on the agenda. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Mr. President, items 139 through 142, I wish to recuse myself to avoid the appearance of any conflict of interest.
All right, certainly. And then, once Counselor Van Helsing has exited, I would ask for a motion specifically on that block of items.
142, right?
142.
Move to approve 139-23 through 142-23.
Second.
I have a motion and second on 139 through 142-23. Seeing no objections, it is approved, and Vice President Van Helsing can re-enter.
Move 143-23 through 146-23 be approved.
Second.
On the motion.
Counselor.
These items have to, are related to the budget that we're hearing on Thursday, including proposed cuts that would impact these orders. So, my recommendation would be that we hold these orders, so that we can consider them after the finances and the budget are decided, which will impact the amounts in these financial orders.
My difficulty in holding these is, I don't know why we didn't hold them in committee on the 24th. The committee unanimously approved these, two days after the budget was presented. I understand the rationale, but we had the budget presented to us on May 22nd with the challenges identified, and the committee unanimously approved these orders. So, I don't know what new information anybody gathered between the 24th and now, but we knew there was pain on the 22nd, and yet the committee voted unanimously to approve these orders. So, why are we holding them back now? They should have been held at the committee meeting.
Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I was just going to say that we had until last Friday, June 2nd, to deliberate on these budget cuts. So, I think it's a reasonable thing to do is to hold those until after we get the budget finalized.
Counselor Gina Tally.
I guess, I understand that the six councilors that weren't on the committee, that they would want to hold this. The five that are on the committee, I don't understand. We had a chance to not pass this through committee on May 24th, and we voted yes unanimously. Nothing has changed since the 24th. Cuts or no cuts. So, and we also approved all the union contracts unanimously. And so, my concern in doing this is, this is not fair. The council has unanimously approved all union contracts, unanimously approved them, but because the non-union contracts, they're more, they're easier to amend or change. In my opinion, we're picking favorites here. And again, I can't stress this enough, these folks watched the committee meeting. I will keep repeating it, because it bears repeating. The committee voted unanimously on the 24th to adopt these, two days after being told we had issues with the budget.
All right, Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, very seldom do I agree with the councils on my right. We're going head-to-head all the time. I voted for this. I support it, and I'm not taking it away. In my opinion, it's not right. I'm a union guy. They're non-union. We're making them look like a bunch of fools. We're begging them to join a union. Why would you want to do that? Why? Why would you want to ruin something? Yes, it's going to be a very tight budget, very tight budget. But think about it, I like to think about it, me buying my second house, and I get a new interest rate, and I already know what we get to spend, and so I focus on what I'm going to spend just for that new house. We'll be able to handle this budget. I'm very optimistic, and you don't hear me say that very often. Ask Councilor Green, she knows I'm always Mr. Negative. I'm not going to back down on this. I believe they deserve a pay raise. Everybody else has got 3%, and they're going to get it from me. So, I'm not backing down. So, I voted for it at the Finance Committee meeting, and I'm voting for it again tonight.
All right. So, we have before us a, currently a motion and second to approve items 143 through 146. All in favor? In opposition? Three in opposition. Motion carries by a vote of eight to three. Report of, and the two memoranda of agreement that were before the Finance Committee will both be on file with the Clerk's office. Report of the Public Works Committee, Counselor Fleming.
Yes, thank you. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, May 30th, and took up 14 orders, most of them firms and fences. We had a few, 128-23, the Making Ethier Way a Public Way, that was held, and the four-way controlled stop at the intersection of Victoria Lane, 093-22, was also held. I ask that we take the report as a whole.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have a large number of finance orders. If no one objects, I will waive the reading, and they will stand referred to Finance. And then, we have a loan order in its final reading. I ask that everyone bear with me, because I believe this actually does have to be read out. All right. The Loan Order 153-2022, ordered by this council on June 21st, 2022, which authorized a borrowing of $30 million for various sewer separation projects, is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows: "That the sum of $36 million bein hereby is appropriated to pay the cost of various sewer separation projects, including but not limited to sewer separation project CSO 010, 032, 045, and 083, separation/rehabilitation and ongoing repairs and rehabilitation of the sewer system infrastructure elsewhere in the city, including without limitation all costs incidental and related thereto and all costs thereof as defined in MGL Chapter 29(c) as amended. And to meet this appropriation, the City Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow the said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 7 Sub 1 or 8 Sub 14, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. And that the City Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to said loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that the mayor or other relevant city official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. The Treasurer is hereby authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under MGL Chapter 44(a) any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes." Can I have a motion, please? Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Helsing.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
That's 11 members' yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Next, we have a resolution. This is actually my resolution. Though I know I was working with Rep. Kusmerik and Counselor Cruz on this as well. We wanted to get it in quickly, so I didn't wait to get co-sponsors to officially sign on. So, this is a resolution. Whereas the maternal healthcare unit at Lemonster Hospital serves hundreds of Fitchburg families per year, and whereas many Fitchburg households lack the transportation and income to safely and feasibly travel to Worcester or Concord to give birth. And whereas the proposed closure of this unit is the latest event in UMass Memorial's decade-long pattern of stripping essential healthcare services out of north-central Massachusetts, including a mental health unit, a cardiopulmonary rehab unit, an urgent care unit, and an inpatient pediatric unit. And whereas, UMass Memorial has benefited from its status as a nonprofit community healthcare provider, and such status carries attendant obligations and duties of care to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fitchburg condemns in the strongest terms the proposal to close the Lemonster Hospital maternal healthcare unit, urges the Department of Public Health to disapprove the proposal, and urges UMass Memorial and its directors and trustees to recognize that their patients in the north-central region are people and not merely numbers to be plugged in to utilization and profitability formulas. On the matter, Counselor Cragan.
Thank you so much, President Zarella. I was thrilled to see this language forward. Gretchen Rodriguez of NewView and myself were at the Fitchburg High School graduation, congratulating the graduates but also letting parents know that this was afoot. The impact this will have will truly be catastrophic. We are asking folks if they would like to gather names on petitions. Gretchen and I, with Francisco at NewView, we have a petition. And I'm happy to share those with my colleagues here at the table and in the audience tonight. Please take one. It says what to do with it. Gretchen and I will take them. I have no words for this. My children were born at Lemonster Hospital. I believe your children were born at Lemonster Hospital. Other people's children are born at Lemonster Hospital. We will have Fitchburg Public School children born at Lemonster Hospital. If that is prevented, now as a half-Armenian person, I do not use the word genocide lightly, but I will say it will be slow-motion genocide for poor families. It will also be a slow-motion catastrophe for those of us with aging relatives. Because if your aging relative is in the emergency room with a serious medical condition and a mother-in-laborer comes in, the triage will immediately go, as it should, to the mother-in-laborer. But this is absolutely needless. Apart from the fact that the legislature just bailed out Haywood Hospital, you know, to the tune of $18, $20 million. So, I am very disturbed about this, and we are ready to fight. We are absolutely ready to fight. This cannot happen to our kids and our families.
Thank you. And I would like to add that quite aside, you know, a proper resolution has to use measured language and so forth, but I'd also like to speak from the heart on this. I was born at Lemonster Hospital. My daughter was not. My daughter was born in Concord at Emerson for a variety of reasons not relevant here, but the point is, my wife and I, we could do that. We have adequate transportation. I have a flexible enough job that I could drop everything any hour of the day and bring her out to Concord. Not everyone in our community has that. And this is... I am generally very much a free-market guy. If this were a for-profit institution, I would say it's not our business to tell them what to do with their facilities. Even if this were a private nonprofit, I might feel differently. But it's not. This is a public hospital. This is a public institution that has received legal benefits from the state because of its agreement to abide by those particular terms and conditions. It calls itself a community hospital. It has advertised as a community hospital. So how about doing something for the community? What I heard when I was at that rally last Tuesday night was a story that I had heard back in 2018 when the other units were closing. That first they stopped hiring for the unit, then they stopped providing administrative support to the unit, then they started encouraging people to go to other hospitals for care that would have happened on that unit. Also that when they went to DPH, they could tell them, "Well, our utilization numbers are way down, so clearly this isn't a need." Well, of course they are if you orchestrate it that way. This is not right. And this is one of the few issues that has come up on this council that I find myself challenged to keep a level head about and challenged to not go into an emotional diatribe. Because these are literal lives we're talking about here. There are going to be mothers and children injured and dead because of this. Because they can't get to Worcester in time or to Concord in time. And I'm always struck by what we heard at the DPH hearing at the Sheraton the last time this happened. The administrators told us and told the DPH officials that based on the statutory formulas, Worcester and Concord are within the service area for Fitchburg and Lemonster. And again, within the service area for who? For me? Sure. For most of my colleagues here? Probably, yeah. For a lot of our families in Fitchburg? That's not a viable option. They're going to be either giving birth on the side of the road. They're going to be giving birth in the back of an ambulance. And quite frankly, I have full confidence in our firefighter EMT's ability to give excellent care in the back of an ambulance, but they're not obstetricians. They shouldn't have to be. And even at the emergency room, I spoke to some nurses that night who said that they had worked in the ER for many, many years. And they could easily handle routine births. But the other ones? I heard stories that night of births that did happen in the emergency room that if they hadn't been able to call upstairs and get maternity unit staff down to the ER immediately, there would have been at least one, possibly two, dead patients that night. And this is not, you know, these events are rare statistically, but in the life of a hospital? They happen once or twice a month. Is that a toll that is acceptable? I mean, is that something that we should just say, "Well, yeah, if that's what they need to do to make their numbers work out"? These aren't numbers. These are literally our future. Young women, and even more so, our next generation. That's what we're talking about here. So I would urge all of us to support this resolution, and I would urge all of us to do everything we can to get this message out. Because this can't stand. I'm sorry, I lost track of who had raised their hands while... Counselor Fleming?
Yes, hi. I find this criminal. I'm just going to piggyback on what both councils have already said. I just want to add a little bit to it. I don't know if anybody's been in the emergency rooms in the hospitals in Worcester lately. I have. And if you look at the emergencies right now, there's people just waiting in hall day, always, because there's no rooms. There's no place to put anybody. The same thing in Boston, and I'm sure that might be the same thing in Emerson. So, we've been, what, working over there, building and reconstruction of everything for the, what, 10 years? And they're closing down departments. Why did they do all that work? I don't understand it. I agree with everything President Zarella just said. I just think it's criminal, and I think there's just no respect for this area. They just want to close everything down, and it's sad for us. I mean, I had both my kids in Boston. Luckily, I had no complications, but the traffic wasn't the same. I mean, just everything's more complicated. And just to get into the hospital, so, thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
Thank you, President Zarella. I appreciate this resolution, and I fully support it. I have some background facts regarding the resolution. The UMass Memorial Health Alliance Clinton Hospital filed with the Mass DPH to close the maternity unit. State law requires 120-day notice of closure, and they intend to close September 22nd to 2023. UMass Memorial Health works with and reports to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The Determination of Need Law and Regulation governs the healthcare facilities. That term is defined in Mass General Law. And proposals for substantial change in services, i.e. the closure of the maternity unit, must be reviewed and approved per this DON regulatory scheme. The Public Health Council of the Department of Health and Human Services accepts and reviews and approves these Determination of Needs applications within the Commonwealth. So there will be a public hearing scheduled. Representative Kusmerik told me that it should be scheduled this week or possibly early next week. And when that is scheduled, we should see it hopefully in the newspaper, and certainly counselors will be sharing it on social media. And at that point, when there is a public hearing, we would urge everyone to attend that public hearing, and you will be able to speak. And if you are not able to speak at the public hearing, you will be able to file a public comment on mass.gov, on the proper website for the Public of Health hearing. I've attended numerous of these public hearings, including the closure of the inpatient pediatrics unit and cardiac rehab unit that you mentioned in the resolution in 2018. And, you know, ultimately, the Department of Public Health will decide this. But it is our duty as citizens to attend that meeting and submit our public comment to show our feelings towards this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, our resolution needs to be delicately put, but that doesn't mean we all have to, especially at that hearing. Plain and simple for me, this is profit over people. That's all this is. They can throw any number at this they want, but this is just profit over people. And I want to share the values of UMass Memorial real quick. Consistently excelling at patient-centered care, acting with personal integrity and accountability, respecting one another, affecting change through teamwork and system thinking, supporting our diverse community. For those of you who love acronyms, that's cares. And I would urge UMass Memorial to one, its vision statement and its principles and its values, and give it him about the people that it serve. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
I would like to just add that Central Mass, and specifically our region in particular, has the second-highest mortality rate in maternity and delivery. And that can be attributed to the fact that we have somewhat of a transient population that may or may not spend a lot of time in Fitchburg. However, the fact remains that we, it is our duty to provide all of our residents a safe place to have a delivery that goes well under the gold standard of care. And here again, you know, I don't know who or what it's going to take with DPH to once again hear our cries when they first closed Burbank Hospital, when they shut down the mental health unit at Burbank Hospital, and then before we knew it, the whole hospital was gone. And then what we've seen over in Lemonster is all of these, you know, specialized departments no longer being supported, which means that we lose that. And, you know, before we know it, I don't know what population of people Lemonster Hospital and UMass Central Mass wants to service, but it certainly is not our population of people here in Central Mass. So it is up to us, and it is our duty to fight for this. You know, I don't know who the heavy hitters are going to be. There's been, you know, a majority of us here on council that have gone to these meetings and have heard our voices and have, you know, talked about our opinion of the management of UMass and what it's doing to our community. I don't know. This strikes more at home just because of the infant mortality weight of the infant mortality rate that is present here. That that, I don't want that on my shoulders, you know, nor does do any of my other colleagues. So I guess I would be looking not only for, you know, Rep. Kusmerik and Senator Cronin, but also to our own Board of Health to kind of lead us and guide us and help us on, you know, what do we need to say? What's the message? And how do we, you know, how do we pinch them in the pocket where they essentially, I don't want to say have us over a barrel, but what can we do other than fight for our right to have a maternity ward where so much of the other necessary services have already been removed from our own community, from our own backyard, literally? So I will support this in any way that I can, but I think that we've got to look and spread our wings a little bit and be able to ask for help and real boot on the ground. We're not going to take this lying down because the consequences will be severe. Thank you.
Any further comment? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to take this by roll call, please.
Absolutely. Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Pastor Gina M. S. V. 11.
Thank you very much. Next, we have an ordinance in final, well, we have several ordinances in final reading. The first is 15823 to amend the general ordinances of the City of Fitchburg, Chapter 44, Section 10, to adjust the wages of, or the salaries, rather, of the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor. Counselor Van Hazinger?
As ordinances 158 through 16023 all deal with issues that will be debated at the budget hearing on Thursday, I move that all three be held till after the budget hearing.
Second. I have a motion and second to hold 158, 159, and 16023 until after the budget here, budget meeting. Anyone speaking on the motion? Counselor Boishman?
Mr. President, I can't do that. I'm going to support this to send it to a final reading. I'm totally in favor of it. I told most of the councils how I felt about it. And I voted for it before, and I thought about it before this, and I get voted down sometimes, so I went with the punches. I'm supporting it. I gave them my word. And I don't let them turn back on my word. So I'm supporting this to send it to a final reading, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Gina Tally?
Yeah, just to reiterate that these ordinances are in line with the spending orders that we just passed eight to three out of finance. So, already approved these. The ordinance goes with the spending. You vote for one, you don't have to vote for the other, but they're joined at the hip. So I just want to say too that I don't want to belittle or downgrade the concerns that some of my colleagues have with the budget. I have the same exact concerns. And I know where their heart is with these. Be that as it may, either if it's because of timing or because of unknowns, again, the fact that we approved every single union contract, to not go forward with these is wrong. And I think on Thursday, when we get to that point, at least the plan that I provided, there is a way to get through what the concerns are of this council that I share without touching anybody's salaries, public safety, or kids' programs. I've provided that path, and I look forward to talking about it on Thursday. So like Counselor Boishman said earlier, I don't believe this budget is as concerning as has been played out. And I will be coming loading for bear on Thursday for my reasons why. And we've already approved some of these. We've already gone through some of these committee votes, ordinance vote. If none of the contracts were approved, then I would totally support doing this. We've passed everything, and then we're going to put the brakes on the easiest part of the salary increases because they're not tied to a contract. So I don't, I understand the logic. It's just, it doesn't work for me. We have to look forward to the next round of negotiations. And hopefully at that point, we will be better prepared or understanding, at least from the mayor's seat, because all the negotiation and the talks start with his office before it even gets to us. So now that the city is aware that there is going to be tightening next year, I trust and expect, and we said this in Finance Committee, that the next contract negotiation with these unions better not be as happy as the ones we just had. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hazinger?
I mentioned it as I made the motion, but all of these three ordinances have to do with the budget. And we're discussing the budget on Thursday. So whether you support these or don't support these, it just makes sense to have the full discussion on Thursday. Because that's when we were planning to have a discussion. That's my point. So I think it's a mistake to adopt it before we have the budget discussion. I think we should have the budget discussion first, and then if these pass in the budget, let's adopt them. If not, we need to change them. That's my reasoning.
Counselor Gina Tally?
We can pass these tonight and still have the discussions in budget session. I mean, we control ordinances in terms of amending them, revising them. If the council passes these tonight, and we have those discussions about the cuts on Thursday, we can then go back and reverse these. I just won't support that either, but I just want to make it clear that passing these tonight does not mean we can't have that discussion on Thursday. If the council majority on Thursday wants to do a 180 on these, we can do that. But I think we're getting a preview of coming attractions for Thursday by our votes tonight. Like the previous votes where it was eight to three, I would have to assume Thursday's vote's going to be eight to three. I mean, nothing new's going to happen in the next two days. But this is the same exact logic as the finance votes. And, but we can still have the discussion, and we should have the discussion, and we can always reverse course. I don't see that happening, but this does not mean we won't have that discussion if we pass these tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
I just want to make it very clear. I'm going to support this already. I can't. But I want to make it very clear to the corner office. Down there, we talked on the phone, Mayor, you and I. The matrix has to be changed. We have to change the matrix, or whatever word you want to call it, the way we set up things. We have to change it. And Ms. Davis, I told you already.
Point of order.
Nick's contract is going to cause problems.
Let's stick just to the matter that's actually being voted on.
But anyway, we got to change. You know, I can understand the counseling to my rights and burn waste, but I have to support this. I can't say no. It's three, three, and three. And you're going to punish them? Again, we're going to punish them. Three, three, and three. You give everybody else three, three, and three? In some cases, you even gave them more. If you read your contracts and you're going to say no here? I can't do it. So I'm not going to, I'm going to pass this tonight. I want to do it tonight.
Counselor Schultz?
Counselor Boishman, it's not a punishment. It's looking at the budget and seeing, you know, discussing what we might be able to do to make the city a better place. There's, you know, we're going to have this discussion tomorrow, so I don't want to get, I mean, Thursday, so I don't want to get into it. But, you know, there's three line items in the DPW that, as a ward council, we get called on all the time. Tree maintenance, berms. You heard the Public Works Committee report by Counselor Fleming. And, you know, those two of them are level funded, and the other one's $10,000 more, and we're short $240,000 in just those three accounts from what was requested by the commissioner. So those are the things that, you know, we're looking at. So I think it's fair to have a discussion, and I think it's fair for Counselor Van Hazinger to propose that. So I yield the floor.
Thank you. I'll just note, I largely agree with the prior sentiment expressed by Counselor Boishman that it doesn't seem right to me, and also Counselor Gina Tally for that matter, it doesn't seem right to me to have given these raises to all of our union contract employees and then say that just because the contracts don't require us to give similar consideration to our department heads that we're not going to. They, I understand the rationale. I do. I genuinely do. That this is a place where we can theoretically make a savings, whereas there are a lot of other things that we can't even theoretically cut. But I think that the people covered by these ordinances are some of our hardest-working and most critical employees. And I don't think that these particular small increases are out of line with what we've already done for all the rest of our employees. So I will be voting to pass these through final reading. If there's no one else on the motion, I'll remind the council that our current motion is a motion to hold. So a vote in favor is to hold. A vote against would then kind of drop it back in front of us for further resolution. All in favor?
Aye. Of the hold, right?
Of the hold, yes. Three in favor, all in opposition. Motion fails eight to three. Do I have another motion? Motion to approve.
Seven to three, Mr. President. Oh, she stepped out.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and second to pass these ordinances through their third and final readings to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? Three in opposition. Passes seven to three. Next, we have three petitions which will respectively be referred to City Property, Public Works, and Public Works. If there is no objection, I won't bother to read each of them out since they will be taken up by committee. Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, 18323. I'm wondering if that should go to Legislative Committee first because there might be something in the ordinances that say we can't do this.
I would think that if there's anything that says that we can't do it, it would be a traffic and safety regulation. So I would tend to defer to our Public Works Department and our Police Department on that. But if there is a motion to send it to Legislative Affairs, I'm not sure exactly what we'd do with it, but I wouldn't object to taking it up.
That's fine.
All right. So those will stand referred, and that concludes our business this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.